Council meeting to order. If we could have roll call, please.
Carlson, Hertak.
Here.
Clint Dennis.
Here.
Anderson.
Present.
Vieira, Miranda, and Maniscalco.
Here.
We have a fiscal call.
Thank you very much. All right, may I have a motion to open the 1:30 a.m. public hearings? We have 1:30 p.m. public hearings, even though we're often here till that time. Motion from Councilmember Miranda, do we have a second? Second Councilmember Clint Dennis, all in favor? Aye. All right, item number 79, there's a request from the applicant's representative requesting a continuance, but it does not have a date for item 79. So if we could continue that to a date to be determined, if that's okay? Is April?
I think it's either April 3rd or April 17th.
Let's do the 17th.
April 17th.
All right.
I move, we continue item 79 to April 17th.
We have a motion from Councilmember Clint Dennis, second Councilmember Miranda to continue this item 79 to April 17th at 1:30 p.m., 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa 4233602, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, these are quasi judicial hearings, so if you're going to speak on item number 80, please stand, raise your right hand, and we will swear you in. Sir, will you be speaking? Okay.
Can you swear all department testimony as you're about to provide your children?
Yes.
The gentleman that just walked in, will you be speaking?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item number 80, Mr. or Ms. Pettis Mackel, if you're going to kick it off, and then we'll go to Mr. Cotton. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Kamaria Pettis Mackel from the Legal Department. I'm here on item number 80, which is a review hearing for the application of SU 12485 for the property located at 3127 West Oakland Avenue. The petitioner is Mr. Ron Fair and Alessandro Koberler, and I apologize if I mispronounced that. The request that staff reviewed from the applicant was for an extended family residence. Staff denied the request for an extended family residence for this property on December 6, 2024 because it did not meet the specific criteria outlined in City of Tampa Code Section 27-132 subsection C for two reasons. And Mr. Cotton will go over those details, but it did not meet the size requirement for the extended family residence, and there was not a confirmation from the applicant to be in compliance with, that the space would be limited to family members related by marriage, blood, adoption, or legal guardianship. I provided City Council in their packet copies of City of Tampa Code Section 27-61, which is the standards for review hearings. In City Council, I mean, in the staff report, Mr. Cotton provided a copy of Code Section 27-132, which is the regulations governing individual specific uses, 27-129, which are the general standards, and Code Section 27-130, which are the conditions and safeguards. I also provided the rules of procedure and the sample motion regarding this matter. According to Code Section 27-61 subsection J3, City Council can conduct a de novo review hearing, which means that City Council can receive new evidence. Mr. Cotton is on, is appearing remotely in order to give an overview of the application and the reason for the denial. After hearing all the evidence, City Council can take two actions. City Council could either affirm the decision of the zoning administrator and therefore deny the request for the extended family residence at that location, or City Council can overturn the decision of the zoning administrator and therefore approve the requests by the applicant for the extended family residence. I'm available if you have any questions, but I'll turn it over now to Mr. Cotton.
Any questions? No, thank you. Mr. Cotton, go ahead, please say your name.
Thank you, Council, if I may share my screen for just like 30 seconds or so?
Sure.
Does Council see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So again, as Ms. Pettis Mackel was indicating, this is a petition for review for SU 12485 for a property at 3127 West Oakland Avenue. The applica, the application was, as Ms. Pettis Mackel indicated, was for an extended family residence. The zoning of the properties are a 75, it is in the Parkland, Parkland Estates, Overley District, and again, it's for an extended family. Just a quick, the part highlighted in red is the property in question. This is a, the floor plan of the property, as you can see, this is an existing location above the garage, and they were going to be proposing to add in a kitchen. When you add in a kitchen, it becomes an access, another dwelling. So there's two ways of getting about, getting, going about that, is to apply for an accessory dwelling unit, which is not allowed in this area, or an extended family residence. As, also as indicated, the, again, here's a picture of the existing structure. The, the structure's a little over, roughly almost 1,100 square feet for the extended family area. By code, the maximum allowable square footage is 600 square feet, so it exceeds that by almost, almost double, and one of the requirements is it has to be for a relative, and as part of the application, the applicant submitted this, this statement of narrative, which says the rumors to be used as an entertainment lounge area for the owners, Ron and Gina. Based on that information, we could not approve it because no evidence was submitted that it was going to be for a relative. Does Council have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Cotton? And please say your name for the record, I didn't catch it at the beginning.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric Cotton, Development Coordination.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Clint Dennis.
So, Mr. Cotton, this area's already built out, and they're just wanting to install kitchen equipment, is that, is that the issue?
Yes, sir, it's an existing, so it's above the garage, it's an existing structure.
So is it, is it addition, is it, is it existing air-conditioned space?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, yes, ma'am.
It looks like, oh, okay, there's a staircase. So there is a staircase to the outside?
I believe the staircase is internal to the structure itself. You get, it accesses through the, through the garage itself.
Oh, okay. Then I see, because the other entrance looks like it goes straight through a bedroom. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, all right. That is it for the staff part. We have the petition applicant come on up, sir, you have 15 minutes, you don't have to use the entire 15 minutes, please say your name, sir.
Ron Fair, I'm the owner and applicant here. So we'll go to exhibit one, that was shown back in 2019. We built the garage, tied it to the house. Honestly, we really didn't want the upstairs to necessarily be that big, but it was the only way really to balance the whole house when we did the whole thing. So we had that all proved, and yes, it was aced internally. I got an aging mother, she's 82, I got an aging mother-in-law who's 79, so just being proactive before something happens and gets forced upon us. In building out the space up above, we were told that we couldn't put in an oven, and that that was the single point that was pushing the use of a kitchen. So we did everything we could. At that time, the new ADU process and everything else wasn't even in, so we did all our notices and everything, just coming for a variance, just to put a kitchen in. In that process, the ADU stuff happened, so I'd like to state that two things were incorrect. Number one, this is under, a little over 900 square feet, so even if it's extended family, we're looking for a 50% increase over the 600 square feet. The second thing that was incorrect is it said that we didn't say anything about family or blood, and Mr. Koberler was told to fill it out, which I confirmed, was family. We were clear about mother, and even going back to the city and talking to staff, we then said, well, it's for my mother or mother-in-law, and that is family. The original record has that. So it's been a pretty frustrating and a long process, and to be honest with you, I still don't fully understand, and this is what we do every day, we're builders and engineers. If we're not in the ADU, I understand that it hasn't been, come about, we're looking for a stove, I even put in an elevator, again, I've got aging parents, and if we're traveling, and my wife and I are still fairly young, I don't want them to have to come down the stairs, step up in and through, and yes, there is a walkway upstairs, but again, that's where we tied it to the house, it goes into my daughter's closet, and then her room, and then she'd have to go down the stairs, et cetera, so it's just not going to be convenient for an aging parent. For those reasons, like I said, we have a denial, but we believe that the ADU does allow for 950 square feet, which we are under, and it was already under air, if that would be allowable, if we're extended stay, like I said, it was clear that it was always family, not for some Airbnb or anything like that, and we're over the square footage, and we're asking for the additional 50% because it was already there. In conclusion, I respectfully request that the city grant this, whether or not it's under extended stay, or that we get a variance that it does at least match the ADU, even though we weren't building it to, at this time, to meet that criteria, it was already done. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I have a question, how would your mother or mother-in-law access that second story? Is there access through the garage and through the main house? Or is there, because when I looked at the, at the cars, you know, in front of the garage doors, there was like an entranceway, is that a window, or is that a door that would give you access to get inside?
Okay, there's a door, if you walk to the breezeway between, there's a door that comes in, but the intent is for somebody aging to be able to drive the car right in, get out, get in the elevator, and go right upstairs.
Okay, so there is an elevator?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no, I was gonna ask, you know, for, I mean, my parents, they're not.
Right.
But soon, you know, getting up the stairs is, is going to be an issue, and, okay, so there is an elevator, and what, you know, you're saying, you know, if family, you know, if it's, if they're saying mother and mother-in-law is not family, then what is, what proof were you asked to show? A driver's license, the same last name, I mean, what is, what did they ask you to do?
I was asked for nothing to verify that, and like I said, it was, our intent was clear from day one that it's, it's only our use.
Okay, thank you very much. Are any other questions from Councilmembers? If not, I'll open it to the public for public comment. Motion closed? Wait, not yet. There's additional staff comment, and there's also rebuttal if needed, so Ms. Pettis Mackel, yes, ma'am?
Kamaria Pettis Mackel, for the record, I just want to clarify a couple of things that Mr. Fair has brought up. This, as a reminder, this was brought to staff as a request to review for an extended family residence use, not for an ADU. Also, I think Mr. Cotton brought up additionally, I don't know if it appeared on the screen in his PowerPoint, but this was the information that was provided to staff as the basis for the use of that area for the application for this extended family residence, and that's, and I don't, again, Mr. Cotton can confirm that, but this is the information that was provided in regards to the application that's before City Council, that was before staff.
And that's coming from the plumbing service, right? Is, I see plumber up there, but the letter is AEC Services Incorporated, it's not the gentleman, Mr. Fair, that wrote that?
That's, he's, Mr. Fair's the property owner.
Okay, but is he AEC Services?
Yes.
Oh, you are, okay. So that's a question, I guess, for the applicant, is why did you put entertainment lounge area for the owners, Ron and Gina? Wait, if you could come up so we can get you on the, yeah? Okay.
Again, that was done at the direction, and Mr. Koberler can verify that, that is exactly what he was being told by staff to put in that letter to verify that it was us using it and not as an Airbnb or anything such as that.
Were you asked for an affidavit or any signed document or statement that said, you know, it'll be used for family and my mother and my mother-in-law?
No, sir, unconditionally, I'd have no problem providing that or doing that.
And is that, Ms. Pettis Mackel, is that something that if he were to provide, there really, there is no second reading, I mean, is there an opportunity for him to do so? Or council takes the gamble and just, you know, believes and says okay, which is, it's not, you know, it's hearsay and not written, written?
Kamaria Pettis Mackel from the Legal Department, so this is a de novo review hearing, so if City Council wants to take in consideration what Mr. Fair is stating before this council, you're, that's what the code allows.
Okay.
But staff's decision cannot be changed, and they have to rely on the information that was provided to them.
Okay, but we can, being it's a de novo hearing, we have the opportunity to allow new evidence and, you know, something that has been mentioned today. Councilmember Clint Dennis?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, so this is one of those things that I, and I understand, I understand staff's, again, one of these situations where this is good, that it has an opportunity to come before council because we can inject common sense where staff has to go by the black and white, but I just want to make sure, so I'm, I'm inclined to, to deny staff based on the de novo evidence that we've heard and what was just stated, but also I want to make sure that when we do that, will that now, is that enough to, for staff to issue a permit to allow this use?
We just have to overturn their decision?
So is there anything else that's going to be outstanding, would that be enough? Is it done at that point?
If we overturn the decision, then he has granted the permit to do what he wants to do.
Kamaria Pettis Mackel from the Legal Department, I, I can't, I don't know what is going on with the permit associated with what he was doing, his, his project, that's where he could provide that information, but all that's before you is whether or not you're going to affirm or overturn the zoning administrator.
And whatever's next is next.
Is, correct.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good.
Anything else?
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Cotton?
Yes, thank you, Council. If, if the motion is to overturn the denial, then I would recommend that the applicant indicate who the occupant will be and acknowledge that we will be doing an annual inspection. That's a requirement of all extended families, that we do an annual inspection every year, so he'll be on that list, and I'll have to confirm that the person living there is the person that's being approved through this process.
Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, you have a specific request in front of you, and in order to be an extended family residence, there are statutory per the code requirements, that's what he came in under, that's what he's asking for, you cannot do it, there is no ADU opportunity at this point in time, so I guess what, Mr. Cotton, and I don't want to put words again in your mouth, Mr. Cotton, you're asking for something affirmative on the record with regard to who will be in those units and what their relationship is as to whether or not that complies with the extended family residence?
Objection to this one, that the applicant has already put on the record who he intends to occupy this unit, so that question's been asked and answered, I think we move on from that, and the, and the technical requirements by law are well stated in law, and so that would be regardless of what this council's decision made, the law is the law, so that's, let's, let's move on.
Okay, fair enough. Any public comment? No? All right, motion closed?
Motion closed.
We have a motion from Councilmember Clint Dennis, second Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. What is the pleasure of council? Councilmember Clint Dennis?
Yeah, I make a motion to overturn the zoning administrator's denial of application SU 12485 for the property located at 3127 West Oakland Avenue, because the petitioner provided competent substantial evidence to waive the specific criteria for an extended family residence, limited to the maximum of 600 square feet, and occupants of an extended family residence to the family, to the family members related by marriage, blood, adoption, or legal guardianship as provided in City of Tampa Code Section 27-132 for the following reasons. The applicant stated on the record and as a sworn testimony that the intended use of this property is for related in-laws and aging relatives in accordance with Tampa City Code.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Vieira, any discussion, if not, let's for a roll call vote.
Anderson?
I'm going to go ahead and vote no, because the letter was written five months ago and clearly said that it was for entertainment, and so to change it to now family is just, I don't, I don't think that that's necessarily the case. If that were the case, I think it should have been in writing five months ago in his letter, so I'm going to say no.
Vieira?
If I could, I'm sorry, I just, I just have, if it can be, can your motion be amended to replace the term that it is being waived to the condition instead has been met?
Okay, all right. Agreeable?
Yes, so I would like to amend that motion to the, being waived to the condition has been met, the specific condition has a criteria for extended family residence, and it has been met, not waived.
And the second, second on the motion is still good on that?
I don't know.
Is that, yes? Yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second from Vieira, a roll call vote, we'll start at the beginning.
Anderson?
No.
Vieira?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson? Hertak?
Yes.
Clint Dennis?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Henderson voting no and Carlson being absent.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, item number 85, Mobility Department, I don't know who is going to be speaking on behalf of Mr. B-Day regarding a monthly in-person report on maintenance work. Yes, sir, please say your name.
Brian Roger, Mobility Operations Manager.
Yes, sir, Ms. Councilmember Hertak, did you want to say something?
Um, yes, just because this is my, this is my motion, and I received some information, Mr. Shelby, I received some information from the public that was concerned about the fact that this wasn't in on base ahead of time, and I did respond to the people who reached out to let them know that that was on my request so we could get the most up-to-date information, and that it will be added to on base after this presentation. All I ask is that you just let us know toward the end when you expect that presentation to be up and on base so that the public can then look at it more carefully. So we're really looking forward to this, thank you.
We can have this on, in, on base after the, after the hearing.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
So I just wanted to basically, open up by-
Did you say your name yet? I don't remember.
Brian Roger, yeah. So I wanted to open up by just providing some perspective on our infrastructure that we have to maintain throughout the city. So for pipe, we've got almost 590 miles of pipe underground that we maintain, which is basically a trip to Miami and back.
Standby one second. For our CCTV, could you move the closed caption for us? Bring, and zoom a little bit? If you can move the closed caption further to the bottom and then zoom. Other way.
Does that work? So again, just 590 miles of pipe, 186 miles of ditch, almost 900 outfalls with the pump stations, retention spawns 148, so as you can see, we've got a pretty extensive infrastructure. And now with that, in my division, I have 62 full-time personnel positions that staff the field operations. The 43 or so, the bulk of it is the, are the boots on the ground, I'll say, so just wanted to kind of show that to you, as well as some of our grading equipment. So for our ditches, we have a wheeled excavator that crawls into the canals, we have a gradeall and a backhoe that are typically used for those operations. For our pond maintenance, you can see it's just a tracked excavator. For our pipes, structures and outfalls, we have our vacuum truck and TV truck that do the inspections, as well as street sweeper, we have the mini street sweeper that operates in the bike lanes, and in the main, the main bigger street sweepers, we have seven of those. Something I wanted to also bring to light is the, the other services that the stormwater operations unit provides. So we assist in special events, implementing TPD's concrete barrier wall, so before all those events, I have to pull staff off to go implement and set out that barrier, but usually before the event happens, but then during the event and after the event as well. And then the last category there is emergency management, the stormwater operations staff, staff's half of the emergency response center three, which I am a commander of. So that's the equipment, equipment that I just outlined. Here is just kind of an overview of calls that we get. 2024, we got almost 3,700 calls, with the bulk of those calls being in August, September, and October, with well over 600 calls that month. So for February, as you can, you can see it's toned down to the 197, so obviously in the drier months, we get less calls for service. in the drier months, we get less calls for service. So the heart of the motion is to bring to you what we did in February and what we plan on doing in March. So these are the neighborhoods that we were in for the month of February. We were actually working citywide, but these are the, the main categorized neighborhoods that we were in. We graded 1,100 feet, almost 1,200 feet of ditch, removed 305 tons of debris. And that debris gets sorted at our transfer station at the port and then hauled to Manatee County landfill. We mow our ponds once a month, every 28 days, as well as 82 miles of ditch. And we spray our ponds on occasion for aquatic vegetation control. That keeps us from having to harvest them later. Outfalls, we did 30 inspections. Pump stations, we did the PM on Curiosity Creek. We replaced some pumps at A-lean and then monthly inspections of all stations and VFD maintenance at Donut and Curiosity Creek. Street sweeping, we did 1,400 miles, curb miles, and removed 250 tons of debris. So for the month of March.
Councilwoman Hertak?
Sorry, you skipped the pipes section and the structures. If you could just go back to speak to that.
Okay. So pipes, we, we inspected or and maintained 33,968 feet and removed 23 tons of material, as well as maintaining and inspected 421 structures, drainage structures. Those are manholes and inlets. For March, we plan on being in Virginia Park, Bay Shore Beautiful, Beach Park, Palmasia, Robles Park, University Square, Forest Hills, and Parkland Estates, as well as we want to make sure that all of our outfalls, the force mains coming out of our pump stations are free and clear. So when we do start pumping, they'll be debris clear. And then as in other, we do have two more parades to implement barrier wall for the St. Patty's and the Pride Parades. And that's all. And for calls for service, we are a 24/7 operation. So anyone wanting any assistance for stormwater-related activities, that's
Thank you, Councilmember Miranda. You had your load on?
No, sir.
He's still on.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm done.
No, he said he was done.
But these pictures are nice.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I included a handful of pictures. This was of the A-lean pump station, some pump replacements. So they, they keep the wet well dry when needed. Here's a cave-in repair. Turned out to be a little more extensive than what we, what we do normally. But as you can see, you never know what you're going to get into when you, when you see these cave-ins. So we ended up having to rebuild the entire structure. Just an example of an inlet top that was broken, likely run over by a car, cut in the corner. So we have to demolish the existing, form it up, pour it back with concrete, and then restore the area around it. This is an example of our North Tampa cleaning. So that's kind of the map we, we give to our operators. And then they go out and hit all that infrastructure. And this is a spillway that was full of debris. And lastly, just an example of ditch grading on North Myrtle.
Councilwoman Hertak?
Thank you. And thank you so much for this monthly report. I think people really want to know, especially after the storms, how we're moving forward on this. And so I'm going to start with, with what I think is probably the biggest and most glaring issue I see, especially because this is the dry season and this is where we can get most of the work done. I really want to know, well, yes, how, how do we get you all off doing parade duty and back to actually what we really, really need you to do? So I'm going to ask for maybe, maybe someone else. I, I see Ms. Duncan there because I know that's probably above your pay grade. But I do want to know what it takes, if it takes us just putting some more money into a contract with a company that can do that work. But I will tell you that because this is the dry season and we really need to prepare, I think it's worth any amount of money, well, reasonable amount of money to have someone else put those barriers in for us. So what do you think could be done to make that happen?
Yes, Jean Duncan, Infrastructure Mobility Administrator. Thank you for the question. It's a great question. Our Chief of Staff has actually been collecting some cost estimates and information from the various departments that do support special events, looking at that very issue. This is a challenge for the Stormwater Operations Group, as you saw, in that the Homeland Security requirements keep getting more robust every year, every season. And that translates to more work for our team. The reason this team is called in is they have that equipment to relocate those Jersey barriers. It's a special skill, special equipment, as you know. So obviously, the simple answer to all of our problems is always money.
Yeah.
But again, I don't want to step on any toes with others or other departments. But if there was an outsourcing opportunity to take this off of our team, we'd be happy to look at that. But I do know the Chief of Staff is currently getting information and it's on the radar, so.
Okay.
Can I say a follow-up to that?
And, and yeah, I, I'm just, but I, and I think, I don't, I don't think Ms. Duncan will have the answer to this question either, but I'm going to throw it out there as to, I'm just not sure. Oh, I lost my train of thought because you asked that. But, but no problem. Yeah, but I just, I, I don't, I just don't think that, that this is something that, that we need to, oh, that's what I was going to talk about, the, you know, who's in charge of putting all this together, how much the, the parade person is paying for it and how, how much we're, and I, I think that's probably more of a dentist question or a chief of staff question.
Somewhat. There's a special event committee that has leaders from the various departments on it. And then there's a decision on what would be, we co-sponsor as a city, what the event promoter would pay. So we have good tracking of, for mobility and other departments, our time and our resources that we're spending, particularly on the cosponsorship, cosponsorship events, where we have an obligation for time and resources and manpower to provide certain maintenance of traffic or barricade setups. We have a lot of information on that. That committee is the one that makes those decisions for cosponsorship.
Okay, wonderful. Well, then I think that's probably an area that we need to look at. But Councilman Clenden, you have a question, then I'll come back.
Yeah, just a follow-up.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So for reference, these, these parade barriers, one, two, two things. Are there other, the folks that are doing, taking care of the ditches or the items that you've just highlighted, are there other collateral duties besides these duties that they're doing, besides parade barriers?
Not necessarily. Just are any kind of emergency management function? So when we get activated, we have to hunker down?
Okay.
And push routes and do everything in those, in those realms. And then outside-
But generally, other than?
This is about-
These are the only routine collateral duties?
Correct.
So how many, how many days are spent doing those parades?
Like, for instance, before the runs, we spent Thursday and Friday setting out the wall and then the Monday and Tuesday following the runs, picking it, taking it back.
So four days per event. We're losing four days of, of work.
On the larger event, yes.
On the larger events. And, and they, are they all, every parade?
For most of the parades, all the parades downtown, yes.
So Christmas, Chris, Christmas, all of them, okay.
Yes, sir.
So the way that adds up when you put them all together, yeah?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And, and the other thing too, I know we did a really wonderful two and a half hour tour of Beach Park. And I want to thank you for allowing your teams to be out there with us and a large group of neighborhood leaders and, and members. So that was a really informational and eye-opening experience for me as well as for the residents. But a lot of the, one of the things that, that they talked about is, yes, we have these particular neighborhoods scheduled, but we also have a lot of reactive work because there are some cave-ins and things. If you could talk about how much of your work is reactive versus how much is scheduled and, and how, how we have a, can, can sometimes get a misbalance. I, I know that cave-ins have increased since the hurricanes. So what, how do we balance that?
We just prioritize as best, best we can based on what comes in and what we find. Right now, we, we would always, in an ideal world, be 80% proactive and 20% reactive. We're probably vice versa to that right now because of how inundated we are with calls and the day we are with issues with the infrastructure, our equipment availability, our employee, employee availability. All those things come into factors when, when they affect our, our ability to do productive work. Any rainstorm that happens, we stop, drop what we're doing and we fan out into the city to try and tackle our infrastructure and any kind of flip-flopped errors.
And so I think this goes to Ms. Duncan. We, we, as a council, allocated a half million dollars more to your department or to, to Stormwater Department to help prepare for this storm season. I know you have an RFP, I believe, going out. Could you talk to us a little bit about, or if anyone knows?
Oh, is that the, for ditch regrading?
I, I don't know what the money was chosen to be spent on.
Yes.
Yeah, Brian can share where we are with the status of that.
The last status I had from purchasing was that we were going to have a ditch grading contract go out on the street tomorrow.
Oh, wonderful. And about with a half million dollars to do that, what, how many miles do you feel you can do, we'll, we'll be able to do with that? And how quickly do you think you'll be able to, to get it up and running, I guess? Because now we're going to have to go to the procurement. I mean, that takes like 30, least, and that's being maybe 60 days?
So if it goes out tomorrow, I would imagine it's a two-week advertisement.
Okay.
And then hopefully we get bidders on that. Last time we were successful in getting a shelter market bid on it. So hopefully when we get this thing out, and then at that point, once we award, it'll come to council.
Okay, wonderful. But going further than that, I know water, wastewater, solid waste, they have contractors sitting and waiting that they can pull from, sort of, I don't know if it's part of the Jock program or, or whatever. But what can we do to put something in place for stormwater so that we don't have to go through this procurement process every single time and that we have some folks that might be ready, that we could, if, if we gave a little bit extra money, what could we do to make sure we don't have to, I, I hate to say waste time, but spend time in the procurement process going forward? Because I feel, I mean, y'all have been working tirelessly and it's super impressive, especially after these storms. But there's just not enough of you to go around.
So we had a lot of success with the FEMA contractor that we got, that they gave us, the, the company came in and they cleaned 200,000 feet of pipe in a, in a couple of months. So we actually reached back out to them to see what, if they have any kind of maintenance contracts elsewhere, and they do. So we're looking at trying to piggyback on that.
Fabulous.
On those contracts. And then, so once that, that contract's available to us, it would just be a matter of funding at that point.
Excellent, excellent. Well, these are, these are great suggestions. I'm, I'm so happy to hear that, that we are moving forward with this. Yeah, okay. Any other question?
Councilmember Clenden, now?
Yeah.
And now go ahead.
I'm really intrigued by this, these collateral duties that you guys have. So, so we just talked about the parades. What about all these other things we do in the city, like the, the run, the gas roller runs? You do all those as well?
Yes, my, my division-
When do you have time to mow ditches?
So my, my division is both transportation operations and, and stormwater operations. So I have a transportation operation team that implements all the traffic control for all these events as well.
Gosh, I mean, we love the City of Tampa because City of Tampa, we love our events. But my goodness, I, I mean, I can't even imagine how many, because I started running through my head, every event that we have in the city, I mean-
I would just say, and Brian can correct me, it's mainly the Homeland Security Jersey barrier-
Oh, I, no, I get it.
That pulls the stormwater team more.
Right.
But yes, our mobility side of the business, or excuse me, transportation side of the mobility business, they're out with what we call MOT, maintenance of traffic product, constantly. Even at the stadium, there's a certain number, threshold where if it's below that, the stadium sets it up. If it's above that, we set it up. So it's a constant pull, so to speak, on that team, which their job, of course, is going out repairing signs, fixing potholes, paving and so forth. So it's always a balance.
And, and I do, and that's why, you know, you've heard me say it from this day, all day long, people listen, about the City of Tampa employees, that every employee that I know is doing the job of two or three people. It's crazy that y'all's plates are, are so full. I mean, and, and it blows my mind because, you know, having the experience in private sector, having experience even in the federal sector, the multitasking that goes on in the city, I mean, we're, we're, we're getting $3 of productivity out of our employees for every $1 we're spending. I mean, it really is amazing. I just, it blows my mind because, again, because, and I'm sure that's part of, I mean, my frustration, all of our frustration because we, we see unmet needs and we say, darn it, why aren't these things getting done? Well, I think that's part of that answer. So obviously sometime in the future, probably maybe after I'm dead and gone, but we're definitely going to have to figure out a way of either having, you know, dividing up this workload to, you know, some of those future city leaders, going to have to figure out to find, to find the money to be able to have separate departments because the city's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. The needs are getting greater and greater and greater. Flooding is going to, it's not going to get any better. It's probably going to get worse. And you look at these, you look at these needs, we're going to have to do something about it. So maybe it's, maybe there was a time when we were a small town and that we could, you know, do this jack-of-all-trades where, you know, the sheriff is the dog catcher and he's the, he's the crossing guard and he's the this and he's that. Well, those, you know, those days are kind of gone now. And I think we're going to have to start thinking that we have to have, we have to have a bigger, a bigger presence to be able to accomplish what the citizens expect.
But just to piggyback off that, that's why I'm saying we should really reconsider contracts for parades and looking at what we're doing as a city. And I'm, I definitely think we should bring that forward to us.
My goodness, we have enough of special events in the city. We probably could support that with our own government. We just have to have the people to do it.
But that's what I'm saying. Are we charging enough to do that? So that's, I think that's our conversation going forward. It's, I just had no idea the volume.
Well, it was, it led me into that. That's why I did that follow-up question. And then I, I'm sitting here going, well, what about these five, what about these gas roller runs and all of these other things that we're doing? It's like every, you know, every weekend, we've got a special event, you know, art festivals. And I mean, there's, like you say, the Buccaneers and, you know, maybe one day we'll be playing, maybe one day we'll be playing baseball in Tampa and we'll have all these crowd control events.
Second day, opening day is less than a month away.
One day, we're going to be playing baseball in the City of Tampa at the Charlie Miranda Stadium.
And I'll vote against it.
We're going to have a bronze statue of you out in front of it.
Make it out of butter for itself.
So like was said at the State of the Union speech in 1962, the best time to repair the roof is when the sun is shining and it's beautiful weather for now and as we go into hurricane season. And maintenance, things like this with the ditches, we, you know, the storms were the storms. The hurricanes were, were an exceptional, you know, occurrence. But doing this, if, you know, if we can increase the manpower, increase the budget, I know we're, you know, 86 is talking about another half million dollars, you do great work. The teams are out there. And like Councilmember Clenden said, for every dollar we spend, we get $3 of productivity because they are out there working tirelessly, more than they should. But this is a, a need. But, you know, us as council and how we can support and increase your budget so you can increase your staff and, and productivity. The city's a big city. There's a lot, you know, I mean, in West Tampa, you've got a lot of the ditches and South Tampa, I mean, just, you know, all, all over. But doing the grading and cleaning and maintenance makes a significant difference, especially in like a summer rainstorm when it's raining for those, even a 30-minute rain in July, this will help. So thank you to your team and, and everybody because this is very, very hard work. Councilman Viera, Councilman Miranda?
If you don't mind, please. Let, let me just say, and, and thank you for what you're doing. I know there's a ditch operation that goes every quarter, one section, two section, three section, four sections. And somebody in mobility or somewhere, they check, make sure they're, they're done before they pay. Am I correct? They do the mowing.
Yes, sir.
But not the ditch cleaning, correct?
We do ditch cleaning in-house.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, that's what I want to get to because there's many areas of the city that are different, but they're all the same in what I'm going to talk about. First of all, if you go down and when it rains on Cypress and North Millard, you can't make a left because it's swamped. If you follow Cypress all the way heading west, you'll see the same thing where the main one is on Dale Mabry and Cypress. Why? Cypress has very few inlets for the water to go into. The water comes in from the interstate heading south, and that's the problem we have for the last 25 years. Secondly, on the corner of Magdill Avenue and Columbus Drive, Magdill heading north and south, Columbus Drive heading east and west, on the east side of the south side, or southeast side, there's an inlet for the water to drain coming down and it goes in. However, from the west side or the east side of the road facing north, guess what? There is no inlet. So the- So the water stays there, because it can't go around the corner and go up, because then it's an uphill for them. If there's any ways you can put just a pipe that big from that side underground to the existing pipe where the inlet is at, I think we'd solve that problem with very little money. But I don't know what's under the ground. You guys do. So I've looked at that for years, and it always floods, and that would save a lot of headaches and a lot of problems with very little money. Secondly, there's ditches all over the city. West Tampa, Drew Park, South Tampa, West Shore, even in West Shore Boulevard, there's ditches. So what I'm saying is not an easy job, because you have a lot more ditches, and when nature was nature, because now we paved over nature, it would drain. Now it hardly drains, because there's too much left of something else and very little of nature. And Drew Park, you had ditches the size of cars at one time. You could drive through. Same thing in South Tampa. So they're mostly gone now, but there's still some small ones. So the problem is the overgrowth of humanity and what it brings. Now, that's the payback we get for being popular, I guess. So there's some resolve in these things and some issues that can be done. If you travel down Cypress, right from Alessi Bakery heading, heading west, you'll find two hundred, I'm not gonna mention it, and, and, and the one hundred yards, you hit at least two hundred, not sinkholes, but things that need attention. And they've, they've been getting attention. But the problem is that the asphalt is down. The problem with the asphalt on top is two different things, and they come back. It's like, you know, like a bad plum. They keep coming back if you don't take it out and harvest it in time. So I, I think you're doing a fantastic job. I think that maybe with a direct more time during these months to ditch cleaning, number one, and then see how we can put the water somewhere else, number two, and, and then pray that the bay doesn't continue getting warmer like it has been the last month. And if it does, we're gonna have a real problem during the summer. But thank you very much for what y'all do on a daily basis.
Councilman Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, guys, and thank you, Councilman Hertek. I think this is a great idea to have this on, on a, on a regular basis for the obvious reasons. I know we're gonna be having a town hall in North Tampa on April fourteenth, and staff will be there. And I'm doing that so that everybody in North Tampa can know what the city is doing to prepare for hurricane season and everything. And, you know, I, I want to hear from staff, not only on things like, I mean, the big buzz out there is the, the pumps and the generators and everything. That seems to be the big buzz out there, but on the daily things that are being done at increased pace, anything that's different from last year. Because obviously last year, we had the, a, a, out of control storm, two storms, and, and everything. But everything that's different since last year, et cetera, just so that people can know. That's, that's important. I mean, the people out there in, in North Tampa have been traumatized, obviously, and so I, I want them to know that. I think that's very, very important. You know, with a lot of the things that y'all are doing, like always say, I, I trust staff. I do. I'm an attorney. I'm, I'm an elected official. I'm not an engineer, you know. I can, I certainly hear things and, and make my opinions known and so forth, but a lot of it is, you know, trusting the professionals to do what, what y'all should do, and I think that's important. You know, long-term, because we're talking about day-to-day fixes, I'm also looking forward to hearing what the county's, countywide independent review is gonna find in terms of what we have to do long-term on making sure that we can withstand storms and how much that's gonna cost us. Because that's very, very important, because I got a good feeling that some of the recommendations that they're gonna give are gonna cost a lot of money. We're gonna have to have a very good dialogue with people on it, and I think that's, that's very, very important. And, and from my understanding, the, the administration, through our representatives, did request this year funds from Tallahassee for infrastructure, and, and, correct? I mean, I would assume so. Yes.
That is correct, and we continue to work with our legislative counterparts in Tallahassee and also federal opportunities. We have a little tagline, OPM, other people's money.
Yeah.
And we live and breathe that, literally. So yes, we're always out and seeking and trying to build the good relationships as well.
Yeah.
Because that often translates to good partnerships, and it does pay dividends often if we can get a good sharing of information with other agencies.
Great, yeah, because the people out there obviously want to help us on, on that issue, and, and so that's, that's very, very good. You know, Councilman Clendenon mentioned the issue of the department division stormwater with mobility. You know, I've mentioned that before. I'm having talks with people in, in the department on it to find out, why do we do this, right? Why do we do this? Again, I have my background on it, and I want to hear from the professionals on it. But, you know, I, I, I do tend to agree with the idea that with a city our size, there is a more than reasonable basis to say that we should have a separate stormwater department. But again, looking forward to having that private dialogue, because again, there's things you don't know, right? And, and so I look forward to the extent that that's relevant to be, so. And one thing I would also tell people, and I'm not an insurance agent, but is, you know, we are in March, and take a look at your insurance. I mean that. Take a look at your insurance. Again, I'm not an insurance agent. I'm not offering professional advice or anything of that nature. But just take a look at your insurance policies and what is covered and what is not covered. I happen to be in Zone X, and I'm getting flood insurance, and I never, I never have gotten flood insurance, and I just am. Because, you know, it's, so I would, I would, individually, in my individual capacity, encourage people to take a look at their policies, no matter where you live, because if last year taught us anything, you never know, right, unfortunately? But again, thank you, guys, very much for this. I appreciate you.
Councilmember Hertek, Councilmember Clendenon.
And I always, while I, while I agree with the acronym OPM, other people's money, I like to think of it as getting more of our money back, because it really is still our money. So getting more of that to come back in-house is really important. I do, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about a few things I did learn while I was at Beach Park. And I think this last picture is a really good explainer of that. Ditches are public right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's not the...
I think they're jumping ahead on this.
Yeah. Ditches are public right-of-way. I've been told that, that folks who are about to get a ditch cleared out will call and complain to city council or to the mayor's office and say, you know, my grass is gonna be hurt. Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, if you call my office to do that, I am not going to be sympathetic, because this is the, no. And, and I need all of you to have the exact same reaction, because we have to clean these ditches. It's no longer about making your grass beautiful. It is about stormwater. We saw, I mean, there's a good half a foot on some of these, and the reasons we're told is, well, people don't want the ditch cleaned. They, it's part of their yard. Well, it's, it's ours. It belongs to us. You maintain it, but it is ours. So I'm going to challenge all folks to make sure that they know that, that we are gonna be clearing out ditches and to get support. And my other thing that, that when I asked what else we could do, they have asked, your staff has asked me to mention, please don't put your yard debris into storm drains, whatever that might be. And I'm really hoping that our communications team, well, in the street, goes into the stormwater drains.
Not in the street. People blow stuff in the street.
You can't blow in the street. It's not legal. And so I'm hoping that our communications team can do some great instructional videos, especially as, you know, mowing season is starting again, what that looks like, to really encourage people not to, so that there's less work for you all overall. But I want to go back to a couple of things. I know that we have ten sweeper employees, but I've had a couple of complaints about not seeing street sweepers. I know we have a contract coming up to us soon. How many street sweepers do we currently have, and what is the contract you're gonna be bringing to us, I believe it's later this month, going to talk about?
Brian, what's your mobility? So we have seven sweepers, and then we, we lease those. And that contract that you're seeing is a lease agreement for the, for the machines.
Okay, so, so we will have, we will be renewing. Do we have any need for, to lease more than the seven that we lease right now?
Not at this time. I think we're able to keep up with our sixty, sixty-day goal of getting all of our routes done. We're behind right now because of, obviously, this is the storms, and we're in the middle of relief season.
Okay, and in your pie graph, it says you have forty-three stormwater employee, field employees. I know you have three zones. How many are in each zone?
About ten, ten to eight, eight to ten folks, because we have also a citywide construction team that, that does what we call micro projects, smaller. You know, one stick of pipe here or there, you know, a trench grate here or there, so they actively work on those and reactives.
So they, because ten plus ten plus ten is only thirty, so that's, you would say like the thirteen are the kind of hotspot or bigger project?
I'd have to look to see how we're oriented now, because we just resized the teams. But I think it's, it's the three zones with about ten to twelve employees, and then that, that fourth one for the construction team.
So for construction. And so I'm just gonna simply ask, how many people would, do we need to handle both the regular maintenance and reactive? Would, would, would you rather have more FTEs, or do you think contractors could handle it?
If I can jump in, I would like to really analyze that and give you a more exact answer, sort of on the spot. Brian and I have talked about it recently about we're drifting from our eighty-twenty, which is the industry standard.
Yeah.
So we'd like to analyze and give you a really sort of data-based answer, if that's okay. Obviously, it would be FTEs and contracts most likely are the two fillers that we, we would need. We'd just like to be more exact on which would be best.
Okay.
And how much.
Then what I would love for you to do is just, I'll have Kelly reach out to you to come up with a good motion for that and a time that you think, how long it will take for you to figure that out and come back to us. And so you can work with my office, and then whenever you come up with a date, we can come forward, because we need to be talking about it now before budget season. This is obviously a priority for the city of Tampa and the citizens of Tampa, and we've gotta give it its due. So thank you all for, so much for what you do.
Councilman Clendenon, do you want to close that out?
Yeah, because that was a good segue into what I was actually gonna say, because I believe, because I've had some very casual conversations with the mayor about these kind of realignments and, you know, because we talk about mobility and having way too much on, the mobility director having way too much on the plate and be able to versify. So are you guys actively involved in doing, maybe looking at realignment right now? Is there anything that's happening actively? Okay. So I think, I think, again, segueing on what Councilman Hertek says, and I don't even know if it would be a motion, but because we're going into budget, possibly between some key council folks and the administration, yourself and a couple of other folks, maybe we all need to have some preliminary discussions, like sooner rather than later, about looking at that and how we can budget for it coming up in the next FY of, you know, so if we find that this is a city priority need, and then maybe we could reach some kind of consensus of areas that maybe we've been funding in the past that we can discontinue funding and shift it to this, because again, the gravita, the gravitas of the hurricanes we just experienced, you know, what Councilman Vera has been hitting on so hard, the issues we have with fire station safety. I mean, all of these things, I think we kind of have to, as we're pushing towards this budget season, if we can take those types of issues, roll it into this issue, because I think they're all equally as important, figure out how we can accomplish that, because, you know, we're, y'all are starting to craft, you know, budget goals as we speak. So this might be a really good time to maybe have a meeting of the minds of, you know, maybe it's not doable with our current funding stream, but maybe there's areas that we can realign our budget priorities and figure out a way to make this happen. And I think maybe we could have some preliminary discussions. I'm sure several of us would be happy to be part of those type of discussions to try to make this happen. So sooner rather than later, I think it's a good idea. I mean, just, you know, spitballing from the dais, I think it's a good idea. You know, because I mean, we're all talking about the, how do we get these things, how do we get these things done quicker? You know, how do we get the fire stations done quicker? How do we get this kind of stuff done? And maybe when we're looking at putting together this budget, maybe there's some stuff in there that we just can't afford next year, that just to try to prioritize this thing coming up. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, item eighty-six and eighty-seven go together, and we have Mr. O'Hara. He's teleporting over. I think he should be there, there. Look at that. See? He says smiling and laughing?
That would be wonderful.
We do the Batman theme for Mr. O'Hara.
Are you doing that for me?
The, the, the TV show nineteen sixty-six.
Too kind, too kind by half.
All right, Mr. O'Hara.
I just want the back gate.
What's that? I'm sorry?
I just want the back gate.
Yeah, that's all. Me too.
That's all they get here. They go down the pole. Did you and Mike Perry come down the bat pole and just like, you have been two seconds, though?
Well, I asked for it, didn't I?
All right, Mr. O'Hara, you gonna start with eighty-six or eighty-seven?
I'm gonna start with eighty-seven, and we'll circle back, if you don't mind, and circle back around to, to eighty-six. Thank you. Dennis O'Hara, Chief Financial Officer. Good afternoon, council. And as item number eighty-seven states, you know, we're prepared to discuss any number of things under, under the auspices of this item. For instance, the questions and answers from our December nineteenth presentation from last year. We've provided a memo with responses. We were prepared to discuss that. We received some supplementary questions. We're also prepared to answer those. We can share our latest hurricane financial picture from the two, technically, three storms last year. And we can also, and I kind of get the impression that this is the highest priority for council at this time. We can also address the fund balance to carry forward from fiscal year 2024. It's up to you. We are prepared to start with the fund balance, if that's council's pleasure. I'm getting an assent, so yes, let's, let's do that then. If I can have, and there it is, the presentation up, please. It's been nearly three months since our presentation on the general fund financials, and you'll recall it looked like this. Back then, we had a pretty good rough picture of what was going on, and, and just to refresh memory, it was very positive. Almost twenty-four million dollars between revenues doing better than anticipated and expenditures doing, well, technically better than anticipated, too. We spent less, but still pretty tight on both those, less than two percent for each of those items. So tight, but very, very positive. And of that twenty, almost twenty-four million, we discussed and we shared with you at the December presentation, we were going to need a component of that to reach that magic twenty-three percent fund bal, unassigned fund balance level. That was gonna be about eleven or twelve million dollars at that time. So if you take eleven, twelve million, you're left with about half, still good, but obviously, you know, substantially less. Well, in those nearly three months, we've continued to close out the numbers and refine the balances of the general fund, the risk fund, et cetera, et cetera. They're being externally audited by an independent CPA firm, literally as we speak, as they are every year. But we're very, very confident in the figures we have. We don't anticipate the external auditor's gonna make any changes. So what I'm sharing with you is hot off the presses, and barring any changes by that external auditor is exactly what you and the public will see on our financial statements when they're published. And here you see it. What I'd like to do is walk council and the public through the overarching, again, fifty-thousand-foot view of the fund balance for last year, and then break it down, similar to what we did last year, but even more detailed, so we can get to, we can get to a position where council knows what they've quote-unquote "got to work with." And here you see it. This is pure fund balance, a little over two-hundred-and-two million carried forward from last year. Again, it's being looked at right now. You see the date yesterday. We're very, very confident that this number is not going to change. And then you see an itemization of our obligations, primarily our obligations, but also at the top, our highest priority. And I have gathered it continues to be council's highest priority also, maintaining that twenty-three percent historical fund balance. So over on the right, you see how much that's gonna take from that pure fund balance, a hundred and forty-nine million dollars. As we talked about, excuse me, as we talked about, and I, I don't want to get too wonkish and lead anybody down the wrong path, but as we talked in December, that's gonna be about eleven, twelve million dollars more than what was necessary last fiscal year. But if we throw a hundred and forty-nine million dollars at it, we've got it. And then you see some of our other obligations, healthcare, ten-point-one million that we need to assign from fund balance in order to keep and, or maintain our seventy-day reserve. The state minimum is a sixty-day reserve. We have historically liked to stay ahead of that, and we've been successful. It's a seventy-day reserve, ten-point-one million dollars. Previous claims, we still owe on, separate from the Dubois settlement, which I'll get into in just a moment. Purchase orders from last fiscal year, city council motions made. The, the only one that really comes, we can give you an itemization, but the one that comes to the top of my mind is the Ebor Art Space, half a million dollars. There were a number of items that city council requested, and we expedited to the tune of a little under three and a half million dollars. And then you have the two portions of the Dubois settlement. Again, that's spread out over a total of three fiscal... Again, that's spread out over a total of three fiscal years. The bulk of it, we took care of last year, nine million dollars. We're on the hook this year for three million dollars and another two million dollars next year. And, and a really minimal amount associated with inventories that, you know, under fund balance guidelines are simply not spendable. So that's not quite ninety, eighty-seven percent of that pure fund balance, a hundred and seventy-six million dollars. I will remind counsel, though, it's probably not necessary, you know, that twenty-three unassigned fund balance figure is considered absolutely vital to maintain our excellent credit scores. Just so counsel knows, though, you see the hundred and forty-nine million dollar figure, that's about twenty million dollars more than our policy. So twenty percent would be about a hundred and thirty-ish. So right off the bat, what we're showing you here is continuing, continuing that, that very firm fund balance position, and it's about nineteen or twenty million dollars to do that. And again, I'll remind, I'll remind the public primarily, I know you've heard me say it many times, our policy is twenty percent, but we've been so far above that for so long, it's really not what's, what the, the powers that be look at. And that leaves us, I would submit a very healthy nearly twenty-six million dollars. Nice and strong, much stronger than we left it in December, but we have talked about any number of other priorities and risks over the last couple of months, months, excuse me, and I'll show that right now. Any number of items that we've talked about, paving and resurfacing, counsel has continued to identify that as a priority. We have, and this is where we're circling back to item number eighty-six, additional stormwater funding, half a million dollars, this would be our recommendation. Yes, thank you. And I apologize, we're handing out these, these, these slides right now, I apologize.
These are the same slides that you're showing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. And then, I'm sorry, I'll wait till y'all get it if you, if you want. I guess I thought, presumption on my part, I thought you were following along.
Oh, you got jokes.
So I, no, I actually did. No, I mean, following along on the hard copy. Flooding assistance of one million dollars has been surfaced also. And then you see the next two items, setting aside funding for the adverse impacts associated with the hurricanes, okay? You have a property tax adverse impacts. What are they going to be? The short answer, and I'll get into a little more detail in a minute, is we don't know. We anticipate there will be impacts in the current year, and we anticipate there'll be impacts in fiscal year twenty-six. I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. And then insurance increases, you know, from a, this is really a macro perspective. Not only did we have the hurricanes here, but you had the wildfires in California. I think anybody who knows anything about this anticipates there will be an adverse impact associated with insurance increases. Right now, we don't know how much that will be. Is it prudent to set aside additional funding for that over and above what we have in the unassigned, the twenty-three percent? That's, that's a question that I think we'll discuss. And then replenishing the funding, the emergency funding we used for the two hurricanes. Again, one hurricane hit us in fiscal year twenty-four, the other hurricane hit us in fiscal year twenty-five. And if it's counsel's pleasure, we have some additional information regarding the hurricanes for you too, wherein you'll see we used fourteen million dollars of that emergency funding. So again, from a, from a kind of a big picture point of view, nearly twenty-six million dollars to identify, based on counsel's priorities, where you'd like to begin, and I don't anticipate that counsel is going to be ready to make a decision right now. I understand we're sharing this information with you right now, we're, we're missing a member. But if nothing else, I think it will allow you to absorb the information and at some point prioritize where you'd like the fund balances to end up. I can take questions now, or I can continue a little bit with talking about the ad-born revenue?
I would love to hear more about the hurricanes, too, if you have any slides, because I think that's, I think we asked a question about reimbursement.
Yes.
And how much we've spent and how much, do we have those numbers?
We do, and we have, and we have a PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, fabulous, okay.
In fact, Mr. Perry can pass it out now. What I, if, if counsel's okay with it, I'd like to at least put a pin in this fund balance and then get into the hurricane presentation, but I can be flexible depending on what you'd like to talk about right now.
That's all. Well, that was one of my questions, so I'll wait for, I'll wait for the answer to that, but the other one was, the twenty, because I support the twenty-three percent, by the way, just a caveat. But I know you, and I've heard you say this before, our policy.
Yes.
Where does that policy come from?
It's our internal policy, we.
So it's just an imaginary thing? So from now on, can we just say our policy is twenty-three percent?
We, we, we could, and, and again, we've talked about this. Is it, the only risk with that is, again, if you're, if you're the credit rating agency, you're, you're not looking at our twenty percent policy.
So you publish that twenty percent policy to the rating agencies?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then never mind. Got it. So it's not just internal, it is externally communicated?
Yes, and maybe I miscommunicated.
Okay.
The only, the only potential challenge with changing our policy to twenty-three percent is, is it would at least.
We didn't hit it.
On the surf, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, no, I, once you said it was communicated externally, then I understand.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Councilman Vera?
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, when we talk about how to use any funds, I would be remiss and be a failure to people here who have suffered so much in the city if I didn't talk about giving additional funds for people who have lost everything in a hurricane. So we appropriated three and a half million dollars, more or less.
Yes, sir.
For that, and I got a good feeling that money's going to dry up really soon, really, really soon. And if we didn't appropriate a portion of this to that, I, I, I think that would be a real missed opportunity for people who have gone through hell and all, they're begging us to throw some ice cubes on them, you know what I mean? So I, I think that's very important, that's got to be a priority. I believe that the funds are going to become available towards the end of March. A lot of things have had to happen in the meanwhile, but again, you know, we, we talked about things, some other things that counsel has funded in there. I think that when you talk about some of the things that we funded that have been noted there, helping out people who now, it is March, this happened October tenth, right? October ninth and October tenth, they're still not back in their homes and they still need assistance. And a lot of these people, when they go on the system to get those funds, may not get funds, they're capped at twenty thousand dollars. So I do think that a robust amount, and we can talk about what that is, and again, you know, I don't think this is something that's going to be in dispute. We have a council here where everybody has very good hearts and wants to help people and so forth, and I'm not talking about some massive percentage of it or anything of that nature, just adding another million or something to that, I think would make a lot of sense. If you put another million dollars to that, you're going to help, I'm not going to do the math on the spot, but you're going to help a lot of people. And, and again, there's a saying, which is, if by going a few feet, it's going to help you walk a few miles, I'll go those two, couple of feet. And I think that as a council, we ought to continue to go through those feet. Again, we're in March, the funds haven't even been dispersed for a hurricane that happened in October. And, and it's very important for folks to know that we are going to get some federal funds, hopefully, but it's going to go through the county. We don't know how those are going to be utilized. Is a lot, are a lot of them going to go to infrastructure? And remember, these are funds that if we appropriate it, can be available right now, right now. Whereas if we wait for funds that aren't going to be available for a while, people are going to continue to be hurting, continue to go through hell. So I would strongly encourage counsel to support measures like that. Again, I, and, and by the way, the flip side is, because again, there's, there's black and white and there's, and there's always gray, the gray of this is that we always have to remember is that in Tallahassee, they're talking about a lot of measures right now to limit our ability to collect revenue, things from all the way from getting rid of property taxes to, I'm reading different things on rollback rates and different things like that that could serve to significantly hamper us. So we do have to be responsible with that, but talking about a measure of this to go with people who are still sleeping on couches of friends, still crying every night, still going through hell, for me, is just the right thing to do and doesn't conflict in any way with fiscal responsibility. And again, I'm, I'm sure that I'm preaching to the choir here, but again, it's the right thing to do. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you very much. And as I'm looking at what you have on your initial coordination from FEMA and FDEM. Pardon me?
He hasn't given the presentation yet.
That's why I want to get ahead.
Well, you've succeeded, so, yeah.
No, go on, I'm sorry, I'll wait.
Okay.
There's no problem, I want to make sure I'm screwed right.
Yeah, understood. Yes, that's the, that's the forthcoming presentation, sir.
All right, so let's talk about the twenty, twenty-four hurricane public assistance.
Okay, you want to switch, if I could have the hurricane presentation up?
He's got everything up here in this presentation.
Yeah, all right, thank you. And again, you, you see we've identified it as public assistance, again, just to differentiate it from any other, many, excuse me, other components of funding out there. Councilman Vera had mentioned the community development block grant for disaster recovery, which is also in play right now, a little over seven hundred millions, as you said, councilman, to Hillsborough County. And we, in conjunction with the county and the other two municipalities, are tasked with developing an action plan. It's a tremendous amount of funding, but it is still very early on in terms of how it's going to be spent. This is the public assistance, this is reimbursement to the localities for, for damage associated with the hurricanes. So that's why we've gone out of our way to identify it as what we affectionately call PA. I don't know what that is. Can I, can I get the next slide, please, or, oh, there we go. Thank you, thank you very much. Just a quick refresh on the process. Again, it involves many, many different players. You see the team here, we're taking the lead in revenue and finance, but the purchasing department, we've contracted with Whit O'Brien, a national well-known expert contractor in these sort of affairs, human resources, risk department, department directors, selected managers, and of course, Mr., Mr. Remmer, our sustainability and resiliency officer. And I, and I go out of my way to say that because it, it really is quite a web. It's about to get even more complex with some of those other funding sources. We're happy to have the money, but, but it can be a little complex in terms of receiving and distributing the funding. And you see here, repair and remediation of city facilities is ongoing, it's going to keep ongoing. The, the gorilla in the room, I guess, was the debris removal, of course, everybody's aware. I think we did a great job, we've received a great deal of funding for that, which I'll share with you in just a moment, but it's by no means ended, and it won't end for some time, if our experience is any indication. And as you said, Councilman Miranda, working closely with FEMA and the FDEM, the Florida Department of Emergency Management, so many different players at so many different levels. But we, we've done it before. We've done it before either with, with previous hurricane reimbursements, or we've done it before with the American ARPA, what does it stand for? American Recovery, yes. So, so we can do it, we're very adept at it, I think, we just have to do it again. And this is some, that's why some of this is a bit of refresh for counsel, but mostly for the public. Again, we have to maintain or stay within our own protocols and policies from a procurement perspective, a lot of Ps in that sentence, because by and large, FEMA and the federal government will look at you, well, first of all, did you adhere to your own policies? And if you did, and we do, that's a big leap forward in terms of cutting through a lot of red tape and resistance. And you see, we've identified accounting structures, maybe this, this is probably more than you want to know, but you see there, we want to make sure we can localize the damages and the dollars to the storm when we can. Okay, they, you know, Helene and Milton hit so close together, it, it got a little, it got a little nebulous, especially with the, with the debris. But also, you see here in that last bullet, we don't want to muddy up or interfere with the department's operating budgets, because the city's still running, right? We still have missions to complete, so we keep it separate and apart from an accounting perspective that also assists us greatly when inevitably the federal government comes in a year or two later and audits everything we did at the storm recovery inception. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. I won't go through, I specifically won't go through this particular slide, but just to give you a feel for just how complex and complicated this process is. Well, it's a lot of funding, it's federal funding to any number of localities, whether it's local, you know, cities, counties, states, et cetera. So there's a great deal of bureaucracy, for lack of a better word, associated with it. Again, we've got a very good history, I'm absolutely confident we'll continue to have a very, have, have very good performance with this, but there's a lot to it that we intentionally try to keep in the background. In terms of cost sharing, well, we, the identification of costs, of course, you see that we have provided and received initial, initial damage estimates, will continue to update those as more information becomes available. Federal and state reimbursement, insurance claims, and the local match, which I'll get into, I'll get into right now, I guess, in, in terms of the cost sharing. Generally, the federal government will provide three-quarters, seventy-five percent, and the remaining twenty-five percent, generally, the state will provide half of that, which leaves the city on the hook for about twelve and a half percent. You see the exception, the glaring exception, the thankful glaring exception right there in terms of debris removal, one hundred percent reimbursable. That's, that's, that's a big plus. Emergency protective measures for that first hundred and twenty days, the federal government will take up a hundred percent of that, and then you get to that seventy-five, twenty-five split, and then the damaged city infrastructure at the very bottom. So typically, based on our experience, the city is always going to have to fund something. Part of our job is mitigating just how much that something is going to be, and it truly does take everybody's involvement. Next slide, please. I will give the Federal Emergency Management Agency a great deal of credit for partial payment. You see here, we have requested three expedited projects. That first, Milton category A debris, we requested, requested nearly sixty million dollars, and we have already received nearly thirty million dollars. That's unprecedented in my experience, working in government in Florida for longer than I'd care to admit. So kudos to, kudos to them, they turned it about, around very, very fast, as opposed to owing us, which is, which is pretty much how it's gone in the past, us having to float the money, they, they turned around and gave us cold, hard cash. So kudos to them, a great relief. And then you see the protective measures associated with Milton in the category B, requested ten million, we haven't received anything yet, and then you can see Helene category B also. They have had a great deal of success with that quick turnaround time for debris removal. I don't know if they intend to duplicate that template. It was very successful from our perspective, I think they view it as very successful. Time will tell if they're going to turn around these other requests as fast, but we do have twenty-nine million dollars. As you see from the next bullet, we are in constant, it really is, constant communication with FEMA, we had our initial exploratory phone calls shortly after the hurricanes. You see the recovery scoping meetings, and then they will come down next month, FEMA staff, and visit with the city staff in its entirety. They are coming down, they've got to, they're looking at our information already, but now they've got to put their eyes on everything, or at least a good sampling of everything that we've submitted to them that is damaged. Next slide, please. And here we get into the cold, hard numbers as of the end of last month. You see here where we used the fourteen million dollars in our emergency reserves, okay? That was the seven million dollars last year and the seven million dollars this year. FEMA FDEP reimbursement, we're budgeting ninety-two-plus million, million dollars. You see the actual, it's about a third of that, okay? So, well, much like financing and projects and construction, reimbursement for destruction also takes time. And, and some of this is simply a projection of when these reimbursements will happen, when we'll actually have to float cash, as opposed to budgeting what we think we'll have to make do with. And then you see total of a little over a hundred and six million dollars, and a little less than half of that in actuals right now. You see at the bottom there, we're floating, we're floating ten million-ish, but at the very bottom, excuse me, we've got over twenty-two million dollars of purchase orders outstanding, okay? So we will be floating tens of millions of dollars, which is not unanticipated, and many other localities are doing the. which is not unanticipated, and many other localities are doing the same thing. You've heard me mention before, and you've probably read, that the City of St. Pete, for instance, took out a fifty, I think it was a fifty-odd million-dollar loan in lieu of floating the fifty-odd million dollars. Still, at this time, we do not anticipate we'll need to finance this. We have the liquidity. Again, another reason for a very, very strong fund balance. It gives us that flexibility, but we'll be floating tens of millions of dollars. Having said that, this is the end of this presentation, and I hope it segues well into what some council members were wondering about the hurricane and in terms of our financial picture, how it plays into our overall financial picture.
So, Mr. O'Hara.
Yes, sir.
In regards to that deadline that we had to pick up all the debris and get reimbursed by FEMA, we met that. Was it a ninety-day period?
It was ninety days, yes.
But we haven't received the full funding, is that correct? Was it half of the total expected, like twenty-nine million to the
Yes.
anticipated almost sixty, but we will be getting that money. We just haven't gotten it yet.
Yes, we have every confidence we'll be getting it. Now, it's just a matter, as has been the case with every single storm, now it's just a matter of when.
So, in the last slide, you showed ten million dollars out of pocket. That's going to be reimbursed by way of what's outstanding there. So ten million, then twenty-two million at the bottom. We have twenty-two million dollars in outstanding invoices that we're, we're expecting to collect.
Yes, sir.
So we're not going to have a ten-million-dollar shortfall or anything like that. It's
Well.
anticipated numbers that are going to come in.
Just to clarify, make sure we're, we're saying the same thing. Right now, we're ten million dollars down. You see the total expenses, a little over, eh, a little under fifty-four million dollars. Our actual reimbursement so far from ourselves and from FEMA is just a little under forty-four million dollars. So we're ten million and change underwater. This twenty-two million dollars of purchase orders are expenses on our parts, just to clarify.
Okay.
This is not money we anticipate receiving. This is money outgoing. So, and that's why, that's why you hear me say ten, about thirty-odd million dollars so far.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Miranda, you were asking about.
I was going to look at that, and I was thinking about thirty-two million, so you just said that, so I have to.
Yes, sir.
Very little. Are you, and one thing is to be certain, certain, because the radio waves in Washington DC don't work very well nowadays, for whatever reason. And, I mean, you think that this city or this county or this state or this country is ever going to get shortchanged sooner or later because of what's going on?
That's a great question, and I have no, no idea. Is it a concern? Absolutely. As, as you've heard many people, including myself, say, and as you'll hear me say again, I've no doubt, there's a great deal of uncertainty out there. What I can say is Federal Emergency Management Agency and their reimbursement process has a very, very solid history, okay? There has been talk of dismantling that organization in its entirety. I couldn't, I couldn't tell you whether that means also dismantling or getting rid of all the reimbursement funding associated with it. From what I've read, it seems to center on the organization itself may be viewed by some as unnecessary, and that localities or state governments could do a better job of administering the reimbursement money. But they've got a very, very strong history.
And I appreciate that very much, because you're telling us the facts, and the public ought to understand that it's not under, under control.
Yes, well said.
Number two, that lawsuit that was filed years ago, finally that money's coming back, that sales tax, whatever the lawsuit was filed in.
Oh, transportation, yes.
And I looked at those numbers, and I can't realize how come we're getting so little when we put in much more.
Mm-hmm. Now, that's also a very good observation. I think from a proportion perspective, it's about ten percent. And I'm, I'm just speaking from memory now. What I don't know yet, and I don't even know if it's out there, is, I think it was twenty million for the City of Tampa and two hundred something million.
Ten million per town city.
Yeah, right.
How does that equate?
Now, what I don't know, though, is from Hillsborough County's perspective, how much of that funding will be spent on their roads within the municipality of Tampa or City of Tampa roads. I, I just don't know that at this time.
I don't know if we're left on or not.
But it is a ten-ish percent proportion.
Remember, the lawyers got a lot of money. Those damn lawyers got a lot of money.
Rough, tough crowd, tough crowd. Oh, I, I apologize. If I, if I could just postscript Councilman Miranda's question and kind of go back to the funding that Councilman Viera was talking about. The seven, the seven hundred million dollars associated with the disaster recover for CDBG, that is also potentially vulnerable from a federal perspective. We just don't know, right? It seems like all systems are go now. I know in talking with the county and the other municipalities, we're, we're not waiting. We're, we're going to expedite everything that we're responsible for, but it's seven hundred million dollars that, I, I couldn't tell you how firm that is or not.
Thank you. Councilmember Hurtak and then Viera.
Thank you so much. So to go back to the general fund balance.
Yes.
Now that we have the hurricane stuff under control, so what you're saying is to replenish the emergency funds from Milton and Helene, we basically need to take fourteen million dollars out of that twenty-five to make us whole so that we are prepared for a hurricane that would happen in, that could possibly happen in the rest of fiscal year twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am. Well said, well said.
Okay.
Now, if, and if I could, if I, again, if I could just postscript that. As we saw in the storms last year, we're under no illusion that that's going to be adequate in and of itself, but it will certainly assist.
No, absolutely, but I'm just thinking about replenishing the funds we have, because right now, our fund is zero.
Yes.
Okay, so if we take that fourteen million out, then we're left with eleven-point-eight million.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just wanted to.
And, and if I could, and if I, from a contextual perspective, no, you, you've, you've summed it up beautifully. But again, as, as I'm keeping a running total in my head, again, we've got the policy of twenty percent. We've got about twenty million dollars more than policy, and this fourteen million will bring that up to thirty-four million dollars in excess of our policy. So just, it's a pretty good chunk of change, thirty-four million dollars in excess of policy.
I don't think I'm following.
Okay, okay, and I, and I, and I don't mean to get too wonkish. I just don't want council to, to not realize what's being set aside. So, to get us to the twenty-three percent, that's.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. I mean, I'm talking about the, the slide that's after we get rid of the twenty-three. I mean, twenty-three percent's already been taken care of.
Yes.
And so that was the twenty-five, and then we're taking the fourteen out, and so we have about eleven-point-eight after.
Remaining, yes.
Yeah, remaining, okay. And so, going beyond that, the only other thing before we can really kind of decide what else we want to do, in, at least from my perspective, is the set aside for additional insurance increases. Do we have a projection? No.
We, we do not, and that's why, and that's why I, I have an Elmo slide where we've thrown some figures down, but I don't want to give council or the public the misimpression that we have hard and fast projections right now, either on insurance increases or the impact to the property tax revenue.
Yes, and I figured we wouldn't have for the property tax revenue, but for me, the, the one that really is important is the insurance increases and just kind of holding that, because we have to do the insurance increases for our people and our buildings, but, but the rest of this can be moved around somewhat. So, so you said you did have an Elmo slide for that?
I, I have an Elmo slide, and again, this is, this is just, if I can have the Elmo up, please. And thank you all in the back there for being so flexible.
Okay, that's reasonable.
And this, again, this is just kind of back of the napkin. You see here, property tax revenue reductions, two million dollars. The, the figures that are being thrown around for adverse impact are just about as varied as there are people to offer those opinions. We simply have no idea what, what that's going to be yet. I have some talking points that I would like to, to, to surface associated with that. And this is, so both that, that two million dollars for property tax revenue reductions and the two million dollars for the insurance increases, those are based on nothing more than Dennis putting two million dollars on, on the page. But it gives council and the public some context, as, as I, as I think you were saying, ma'am, about the flexibility that you have in terms of that twenty-five-point-eight million dollars.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I look forward to hearing what the rest of council has to say.
Councilman Viera.
Yes, so a couple of things, and I'm glad that Councilman Miranda brought up Washington, and you indicated, Mr. O'Hara, that those seven hundred million or so funds, dollars, they're i- i- so it's safe to say it's not, it's not, we don't have blessed assurance, right? You know what I'm saying? Yeah, yeah, and, and that's the challenge right now. I mean, without getting into the madness in Washington, is that customary things like this, the local communities rely upon, there is, there is that grade that's being inserted into these types of issues that, that there shouldn't be any gray, and the promises are made. People are relying on that. For example, that those seven hundred million dollars, you know, a community like ours that's been as devastated as it has been, that's what we pay taxes for. I mean, April fifteenth is coming up, right? We pay a lot in taxes, and we go, this is what we pay taxes for, and now those funds aren't going to be potentially coming our way. So, you know, that's very frustrating. And I'm also glad that the AFT offered transportation funds were also mentioned as well. You know, I, I've, I've heard things about the, the distribution, and Councilman Miranda, I think, mentioned about the comparison between our friends in Plant City versus the City of Tampa. And I would say, though, that with any funds that we get, that mobility talked to council members, because we, you know, just like, obviously like the mayor, we know what's happening in our own communities, and especially, and again, citywides as well as district people, but especially district folks. I think that's so important in terms of how you're going to use those funds and just ideas from us, because again, we, we know what we hear from people. And there, there are objective findings that people in mobility obviously have, but also I think what you hear from the community is also very, very important as well. So, and, and yes, ma'am, you want to say something?
Um, we, we have already received a list of where it's going. They decided that for us. I forwarded it to you all when I got it from the TPO.
And I didn't like it.
So, yeah, but I don't know that we have any rule to argue.
So I, like, for example, I saw, and I did see that, because I saw that there was a portion of, I think it was Bruce B. Downs to, or strike that on Bruce B. Downs, what is it, from Fowler to Bears? And so I was going to see if any of that, that was kind of my way of seeing if any of that could be revisited, because I didn't like that at all, because the things that I'm hearing in, in New Tampa and North Tampa, it's not that section that they're looking at in terms of District Seven. So I, I, I do remember seeing that, but unfortunately, again, I, I do wish that we we would have been talked to on things like that, because again.
Talk to your state legislature.
Oh, I know, no, I, I, but believe you me. But in terms of where those funds, again, to the extent that funds are going to go to the City of Tampa, right? That, that we can be a, a part of those conversations, I think that's very important in terms of with the administration, mobility, and so forth. But again, going beyond what you're here for, but just bringing up that issue as a side issue. But yeah, no, I saw that list, and I was like, what? I mean, I, I hear about roads all the time in New and North Tampa, and, and Thirtieth is being done, North Boulevard's being done, but New Tampa Boulevard finishing off Tampa Palms Boulevard, you know, not being touched there. The, the amount of disconnect is great, so yeah, so I.
Before they're over, they're going to be city council in Tallahassee.
Yeah.
They're going to take, they're going to take over that.
Oh, I know. No, listen, it's, yeah.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. O'Hara. Does that complete eighty-seven? We can go on to eighty-six?
I have one quick question.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So how, so the, the gap between, because clearly we've had the expenditures for the hurricanes.
Yes.
You know, all this, these expenditures. How are we funding this waiting for the reimbursement? Oh, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul?
Yeah, well, I, I wouldn't, yes, but I, but if I could add a little detail associated with that.
Do it, do it in a fancy government accounting kind of way?
Right, right. Again, this is, and I'm oversimplifying a little bit, but again, this is one of the, the strengths of having such a firm fund balance. You know, we will, you know, for instance, debris removal, you know, we will pull funding as applicable from non-general fund, funds, but with that strong fund balance and our, and our liquidity, we can afford to simply float these expenditures as opposed to, you know, again, financing and incurring the, you know, the interest expense associated with that. Now, will it cost us a little?
How long?
I'm sorry?
How long can we keep that up before it actually starts hurting?
So far, in our projections, so far it hasn't reached that it's going to start hurting part yet because of the timing of the expenses and the, again, it's, it's, it's a bit of an educated guess, the anticipated timeframe of the reimbursement.
But I, I can imagine that we, so we go into hurricane season, we have a hurricane in September, and we still haven't gotten reimbursements, it's going to start hurting.
I'm sorry, say that again, I'm not sure.
Let's say we have another hurricane in September.
Oh, yes, I, we will, I imagine, again, depending upon the severity of the hurricane and the damage, we may reach that tipping point that you described. And of course, if, if we do, or if our projections show that we will, we'll bring it to the mayor and council's attention.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very much. Item eighty-six, the last item of the day.
Eighty-six. Now, that is the five-hundred thousand dollars. We would recommend the most expedient form of, of funding would be from this fund balance for fiscal year twenty-four.
Very good. Do you need an official motion?
I believe we do.
All right, Councilmember Hurtak.
I'll move the half million to go from this the unused general fund balance from fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to go towards stormwater for preparation for this year's rainy season.
We have a motion, Councilmember Hurtak, and then Councilmember Denny in all in favor.
Right.
Any opposed? Yes.
So what are our next steps?
Our, our next steps would, I, I think, would be to, first, digest this information, okay? Hope, we, we've, we've really tried to, and, and I apologize, and you can certainly give me feedback if, if we've gotten too detailed.
No, it's perfect.
But I did want council and the public to see the entirety of the pictures, as opposed to just simple revenues and expenditures and things like that. So I, I think the next step is to digest this information and then, and then come back and prioritize how, how you'd like to allocate this fund balance, and then we can make it so. We, what you won't see change, again, barring any external auditor action, is that two-hundred-two-point-two million dollar figure, which is very important for us, because that's going to be nice and consistent, what everybody's going to see in the financial statements. Again, it seems like we're all on the same page for the twenty-three percent, in which case, again, it's this twenty-six, and the obligations that we really are, that are really nondiscretionary. So the next steps for me would be to digest this information and prioritize where council thinks this funding should be set aside.
And I, I have one more question about replenishing this emergency fund.
Yes.
So normally, an emergency fund is just sort of like a rainy day fund, and so for one fiscal year to the next, we just kind of float it, the same seven million. But in this ca- ti- case, we couldn't float the seven million, because we used it for Helene and Debbie, and so we incurred an extra seven million.
Yeah.
So if we're paying ourselves back for this, we would then, would we then have an emergency fund balance for hurricanes of fourteen million?
This would net to, if I'm not mistaken, seven. This will get us back to the baseline seven that we've historically established.
Okay, just wanted to.
But that's a, no, that's an excellent question. I wish I'd clarified that.
And I think my other only question about that is a, I mean, this is kind of an existential question, but is seven million dollars enough? Should we move that to ten million dollars?
That it is an existen- existential question. About the only thing I can guarantee is, again, depending upon the severity of the storm, it will be inadequate. It's better than nothing. And again, depending upon the severity of the storm, you'll have the seven million, you'll have the, the amount, again, nearly twenty million dollars, over the twenty percent policy. Is that adequate? It's anybody's guess. Could we crank it up to ten? We, we absolutely could. It just, there, it's just such a big X-factor, we just don't know.
But, and I guess, so then my question is, how do we arrive at seven to begin with? Is that basically a number that just handles the overtime for the employees? And the cost of pulling, I know we have to pull different trailers and do this and that. Is, is that how we ended up with the seven million dollars, or is it just arbitrary?
At one time, it was based on exactly what you described, and then it has just, I mean, we did have a long timeframe of no storms, so it just kind of took on a life of its own. From an outsider's pers- an outsider's perspective, whether it's credit rating agency investors, they do like to see something set aside for emergencies, and typically, when we say emergencies here, we mean hurricanes. It, does it carry as much weight as that twenty-three percent? No, it doesn't. But it's nice to see that we have, that the city has the forethought to set aside something for storms. Whether that's the, the right figure, about all I can tell you, it's, it's probably the wrong figure, but I couldn't tell you what the right one is. It's just, it's very nebulous.
Well, knowing that at one time it was balanced on the actual costs of those personnel and the pulling of the specific things we need, is there a way that, you know, over the next several months, we could find what that number might be? Because I, I think that would be a really good exercise just overall, because as you said, we haven't had these storms, but I would love to at least make sure that we can pay our people who, who are going through these horrific things and doing the courageous work. that we can pay our people who, who are going through these horrific things and doing the courageous work of being on the front lines. I wanna make sure we can at least pay them and make sure that they can eat and, you know, shower and do all those things, so, and have, have power while they do it.
Yes, thank you. That'll, no, we'll, we'll run that to ground. That's, that'll be an interesting exercise. I mean, just to clarify, of course, when we run out of the 7, we'll, you know, we'll take it from the, from the, from the other fund balance. But yeah, that'd be, that will be informative.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Clendenon.
Yeah, just on the $500,000 annually for, um, stormwater support and ditch grading.
This is a one-time?
Oh, it says annually.
Like, one-time for this year.
Yeah, it was one-time for this year.
I don't know why it says annually, but.
It said annually.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I would love to be able, I think we need more than 500,000 annually. We were just talking about 500,000 to be used.
To catch up.
To catch up. That my, my intent was not for annual.
Yeah, it is annually.
Where, oh, annually starting. Oh, okay, well then, so be it. But I think we're gonna need more.
I mean, they, they, so, so it is written this time and it always could be changed in the future if we decide to do either less or more. But that being said, what I would like to, as far as right setting, because having been involved in budgets in the, in the federal sector and, and doing things like this, a lot of times, this type of funding, it's like, if I, that type of a level, just so council folks know, overtime is usually a really good way of accomplishing, especially for the seasonal type of activity, either through contracts. So, just knowing that that may be the best use of this is providing overtime or hiring temporary help, just so. Cause you, cause you had said figuring out a way of how we're gonna use that money.
Yes.
I think that's how we.
Yes, sir. Councilmember.
He's right, because we already have the expertise, the material in hand, and you actually do it quicker than if you loaned it out to somebody else, farm it out, you're gonna get a higher return even though you're paying more because it's gonna be done more efficiently, more quicker, quicker, quickly, because the people already know what they're doing.
Right.
Yeah, but we don't have enough of those people, that's the problem.
I understand. I'll volunteer you and Clendenon to go do it.
Only if I can wear a Speedo.
That's not gonna happen.
Whoa, look at the time.
That's get, that gets a gal.
Mister, Mister Chair, if I could just postscript, not the last comment, but comment a couple. Uh, should council decide they do want that $500,000 to be recurring? Or if it's recurring now and you decide you don't want it to be recurring? Of course, we can address that as part of fiscal year 26 budget preparation.
Councilmember Miranda.
I prefer it to be on a yearly basis. Uh, and I, I understand why, but it, I think it, we may not have those years, that 500,000 could be used for some else if we had to deviate from that. So, I would say that to it yearly on a basis as needed.
Fair enough. All right, Mr. O'Hara, thank you for a wonderful report. You and your team, Mr. Perry's here, always super, super professional.
My outro, thank, thank you, council, very much. I appreciate your interest.
Yes, sir. That concludes the agenda for today. We'll go to new business, Councilmember Miranda.
Yes, sir, I have, uh, three of them. I'm gonna take, uh, Mr. Viera's spot today. No, I would like to make a commendation to the Tampa Water Department on Thursday, April 3rd, 2025. It is, uh, joint of utilities and Florida section of the American Water Works Association proclaiming April as Conservation Water Month.
All right, we have a motion from, uh, county, uh.
County Commissioner, no, city council.
From Councilmember Miranda, the second, Councilmember Viera on the favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Uh, the second one, I would like to make a motion to present commendation to the winners and finalists of the USS Tampa Post Number Five American Legion Oratorical Contest. The delivery of these young contestants demonstrate the keen interest and appreciation of the principles and values that set forth in the Constitution of the United States and their awareness and the responsibility incumbent to each citizen, the exercise and protected rights. I would like this presentation be made a commendation prior to the start of the evening, April the 10th, 2025.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second, Councilmember Viera on the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, or anything else?
And then the last one, I would like to make a motion to present commendation to the Tampa Water Department on April 17th for its pro- proclaiming May 4th through 10th, 2025 as Drinking Water Week.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second, Councilmember Viera on the favor? Aye, any opposed? Thank you, Councilman Viera.
Uh, yes, sir, a couple of quick ones, if I may. Um, just a written report on April 3rd, motion for a written staff report, um, on the crosswalk improvements. Uh, any crosswalk improvements include a flashing light and repainted crosswalk striping across Tampa Palms Boulevard at Bruce B. Downs near Publix, um, to enhance pedestrian safety as well as similar, uh, improvements, uh, on Tampa Palms Boulevard.
We have a motion from Councilmember Viera, we have a second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I was asked to give a commendation to paint your heart out on March 18th, so therefore I make that motion.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Viera, do we have a second? Second, Councilmember Clendenon on the favor? Aye, any opposed?
Um, next, a lot of y'all know Karen Clay, who's a wonderful lady, Kathy Congresswoman. Kathy Castor invited her, which is so great to go to the State of the Union or address, address Congress or whatever the hell that was, by the way. But, um, but she went and she's a really, really good lady and she's starting up a 501(c)(3) um, to deal with, um, uh, people with disabilities. Um, and so I wanted to invite Karen for a five-minute, uh, presentation, just for her to tell folks uh, what her 501(c)(3) is about on May 15th.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, second, from?
Second, I can second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, council. Um, then four and five, um, I had mentioned about housing funds and the $3.5 million or so that we're gonna be, uh, that we're gonna be, um, seeing go out to community members in the end of this month. I wanted a report just written on April 3rd, which is, number one, how much of those funds by there are gonna be left? And then, number two, an inquiry on where we could potentially get additional funds. We talked about the funds that, we talked about today, but number two, we could also talk about, are there existing housing funds and so forth that could be geared towards that? So, just an inquiry from staff on where potentially, just so that we can be fully informed. And April 3rd's a good date because it's about a week after, uh, the program begins. I believe it is.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second? Second, Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? Aye.
And that's it, council. And I was talking with Mr. Shelby offline about potentially doing one on, on AFT and seeing what feasibility or movement council has in any of those funds. But let me get the language down and I'll make it later, but th- thank you for that. That's a good idea.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. First of all, um, I would like to ratify and confirm the letter written on behalf of the city of Tampa on the passing of, um, Randolph Theodore Myers seniors, senior, Commissioner Myers, Gwen Myers' husband. I wrote it on our behalf and my motion was not clear in that manner, so I would like to ratify that.
We have a motion, the second, second, Councilmember.
Okay, and I think I gave you a copy already, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, ma'am, anything else?
Oh, yes, there is something else. First, I would like to, um, uh, ask Hurtak for something first before I, we, our May workshop, um, we are to discuss, we, we can only do five things, right? And one of them that's on there is, um, city council salaries and that was yours. If we could move that to September, that would provide me with an opportunity to address this digital sign. Um, and, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, but I'll let you move it, cause I, I think I did it just because I was there, but I know you kind of spearheaded that, so go for it.
I appreciate it. So, I move that we change, um, the, um, council salaries discussion to the September 2025 meeting and leaving room for digital signs workshop, um, in May.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Henderson, second, Councilmember Hurtak, all in favor? Aye, any opposed?
A quick, a question, if I can.
No questions right now. Is it a really important question?
Yes, it is.
A legal question?
It's a very important question.
Okay, what is the legal question?
The legal question is, did, did you actually add the workshop for the digital signs? It's already on there.
She made a motion to.
I actually made it in the motion.
Postpone the salary one and then replace it with.
Yes, because we already have five.
You rolled it into one motion?
See, you throwing me off, Mr. Shelby.
No, you're throwing me off, councilwoman, but that's okay.
But I did follow the rules, cause there are five, right? That's our maximum. I asked Hurtak in advance if we could move one, she said yes, and then I made the motion.
Okay, but, and just, just so that you're clear, there is no, I, I don't believe it, I'll double check. There is no rule about the number of workshops. It's what needs to be accomplished within the four hours. It says five items?
See what I'm saying? You, you, can I, I just need to, I need to proceed.
My apologies.
Okay, cause I have a lot, and this is, this is a big deal for me, so now you kind of like just threw me off a little bit. So, okay, that part.
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, I need to, first of all, I want to say thank you to my wonderful University of South Florida senior, um, intern, Alex. She transcribed everything that I said at the meeting on January 28th because it kept coming back to me through my legislative aide, we don't know what Councilmember Henderson was. So, I kind of, um, highlighted some of the things that I really was very clear about regarding, um, the Central Business District and digital signs. Okay, with that being said, first of all, I, I want to, um, address, um, the Digital Board, um, editorial that was written without a conversation with me. I'm not afraid to do that and it's girl power month, so I, what I want to say is that I wasn't given an opportunity. I did have a conversation with Mr. Hill yesterday, he wrote an editorial. And there's two things that I just want to clear up. Um, digital pollution is definitely an unfair statement. Digital media is progressive. That's exactly what it is and it's an opportunity for our city. And I thought that I was very clear in my conversations, uh, that we should take a thoughtful approach to it. I'm not rushing to blow us up like Las Vegas and I also said that. What's interesting to me is that even the information that was presented by staff and their sec- that their, their new attempt is they looked at Denver, who has unlimited signs, they looked at Atlanta, who has 25 signs, but Baltimore is really falling into the category of where I would like for us to land, but that was not referenced in this new report. So, I would recommend that you, you know, take that into consideration and go back and look at even the, the notes, um, because I was very clear about that. So, uh, digital pollution, I wanted to address, and also even the, 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 the safety aspect of it that Mr. Hill wrote about in his editorial, which is an opinion, by the way. Um, I've only received one letter from a constituent that followed his actual editorial. So, it's not a whole lot of people complaining. And also, as a council, we have a right to come up with new ideas. You know, Allen is, Clendenon wants the streetcar and I suppo- I like that. You know, we get, we have a right to be progressive. It doesn't, we don't have to wait for people to tell us what to do. We can do our jobs, we were elected, and so we can do our jobs on our own and present things. And if the public doesn't like it, they have a right to make public comment about those things, sir. So, I just wanted to say that. I, I know this is a little bit luxury, but I, I just need to set it up for what I'm asking for. So, also, the fact that there's the, the safety issue, and I presented this in my comments, that digital, um, signs are not a distraction. The studies show that the distractions are people using their cell phones. Digital signs is not a distraction and it's not pollution. It is content, thoughtful content, and we have an opportunity to do that if we write really good code. Okay, so, with that being said, now let's, let's, um, you know, get to something that I, I can go with or, or what I can't deal with. The, um, Charlie, you're talking and it's distracting me. Okay, so this, I know, but it's distracting me. So, okay, no problem, sweetie. The, um, I mean, Mr. Miranda.
No, Charlie.
No, because my mentor will get in my case about saying calling you sweetie. Okay, so, um, the two-year timeline is unacceptable, just clearly unacceptable. So, because I asked Hurtak to move the actual, um, the, um, actual workshop for city council salaries to September, this does provide us with an opportunity to do something where I can make a motion next week to offer us an opportunity for the downtown partnership to possibly write, uh, to, to, to write good design in a 40 dot five-day window that can be presented to us in May, that we can take into consideration. And that's very thoughtful, where they can work with the media companies, but we're not gonna wait two years and get to a first reading in, um, May of 2026. That's just unacceptable. We can do things a lot faster than that. And so, um, uh, okay, let me, hold on. I got, I have too many notes here. The other thing is, um, and I, I made this very clear in the January 20, the January 28th meeting, um, that the opportunity to utilize the entire Central Business District is what we could consider, especially if we're thoughtful in our approach, uh, of not the 25 that you presented with Atlanta over 1,000 acres. We're less than ha- we're half of that. And so, 10 to 12 signs would be nice and 500 acres. And so, there's, so, so you all creating, instead of the two districts talking about a gateway that still does not, um, really, that's not inclusive of the entire Central Business District and therefore there's not, that means you're limiting opportunities. And I don't want to discriminate against anyone. So, that's one of the things that, that I want to say. And the pilot program, that is the one that I, um, actually, Kathy. If we can, if we, if, if, if there is a pilot, it's not a pilot where we gotta wait two years to see if this works. A pilot opportunity can be where we move something along really fast and that is a city asset. A city asset that we can say, you know what? Well, let's try it on a city asset where we can move just as fast as we did when we did a design exception. And so, there's an opportunity there with a city-owned asset, but a pilot that's two years in the making? No, we can do that. I am gonna have a conversation with Mr. Holland. I think that he will definitely support that because he was one of the initial supporters from the very beginning. And duh, 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 duh. I don't want to, I, I do want to thank the staff for at least moving the needle two inches. I can say that, you know? Um, I think that there obviously was some clear collaboration, like the, the newspaper and staff are on the same page as where they initially was. So, the other things, just to wrap this up, is that, um, the rationale about the boundaries is just not a good return on investment for the people who are interested in working with our city as well as the businesses in our Central Business District. It's not, it, it, you, you're taking out opportunity and I don't like that by creating a gateway. So, that's definitely out of the question. Even the size, the size where we did a design exception of 3,800 square feet, we're asking for maybe a third of that, maybe. And there is Chapter 14 dash 10 of the Florida Administrative Co- Code that gives us the flexibility in side signing. And it's also important to do this with a thoughtful approach with the actual, um, you know, size of the buildings. It just depends. But the downtown partnership, working with the media companies and our staff, if they want to, because they actually could write code right now. We're in, we're writing code right now. We're in the last cycle of writing code. But if you want to participate with the downtown partnership, then by all means, yeah, let's do that, but we can move that along. And I will make that motion, but I'm just letting you know in advance, next week at the CRA meeting, I will be making a motion for us to move this along in 45 days where they can come back, um, with some criteria that we can actually have a discussion about at our workshop. I think that's more than enough for right now, right? Yes?
Thank you, council.
Can I speak to that too? Cause I got more than one email. Um, maybe they were just to me. But I got quite a few emails and I was actually trying to have Kelly find my response so I could read it out loud. Okay. Um, and she's, she'll come back with it. But basically, I'll just, I'll talk about, I, I, I finally had to go read the editorial because we kept getting, I kept getting them and I was like, okay, I gotta deal with this. But my, my big thing is, we're having a conversation about whether we can have signs because that decision was made for us years ago when Water Street was approved. This, this was something that the city did in a plan development that, that they already allowed. So, this is not an option for us. And that's what I've emailed people, that it's not, whether or not we can have signs is not an option because the city made that decision for us. And the city made the decision, uh, without following the ordinance that we already have. And that's the part that frustrates me is now we're being, we're being pu- um, you know,
And that's the part that frustrates me, is now we're being, we're being, you know, being used as the scapegoat for this, but it isn't us. Honestly, I mean, I wouldn't have supported this. I wouldn't have supported signs, I'll be honest with you, if this already hadn't existed. But I believe in fairness, and at this point, we don't have any other option, because the other sign companies can sue us, because we've already allowed it. And that's, that's really what it is to me. To me, it's an issue of, okay, I'll just read it. Unfortunately, the city chose to allow the Water Street area to have digital signs when it approved its development agreement years ago, even though it clearly contradicted our sign ordinances. You can see one massive sign on the side of Amelie Arena facing Channel Side Drive, and another being constructed now facing Water Street. Because of this, our hands are tied. We can't take the approval away from the Water Street development. Therefore, we have to allow others the same right. Not allowing digital signs would open up to us, to lawsuits. The only real option left to us is to develop guidelines around their placement and use, which also has to take into account the sheer size of the signs already up at Amelie. So we have to work with the realities we've been handed, and that's all I'll say about that, because I agree.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm glad that you read that, and I'm glad that you, you know, even expressed your initial thought on it. I like the idea of us moving in a direction that shows growth and also that is supported by some key stakeholders in our city, like, you know, Visit Tampa Bay and the Downtown Partnership and Strass and, and the museum and the aquariums. It's not like, and the, well, he, he was kind of, you know, he knew on his job. He, he, he left it very reserved, you know, my conversation with him, so... Yeah, he do, he does, he does, he does. And, you know, it does generate a different type of revenue, so... But I appreciate your comments, and it's really just about us, us, us making good decisions together. And it takes four votes to get anything done, and that's also fair, too. I've been on the losing side of things before, and if that is the case, at least I will have fought with integrity for something that, you know, I feel is important. No one put, I ran for this job because I wanted to, even though people had an issue with that. I am not afraid to make my own decisions. Nobody talked me into this, and I'm saying that to staff, and I'm saying that to the Tampa Bay Times.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Viera?
Thank you very much. Yeah, and I'll, and I'll tell you, Councilwoman Henderson, I, I always tell people, when you're in public office, you have to fight for what you organically believe in, because you're gonna take hits from a variety of sources, and it's good to take hits for things that you believe in. Whenever you see elected officials, and by the way, because again, it's, things get so damn political. I don't mean anybody up here, or anybody who serves in city council, but just throughout the country, who try to be something they're not, and then they get hit for it. I'm like, man, that must really suck, because, you know, you're not being who you are, and you're getting punched for it, you know, be punched for, for, for what you want. You know, I, I, I did read the editorial. One of my morning routines is to read the Tampa Bay Times and the Washington Post every morning, I, I just, whatever, whenever it came out. I think it was Monday or Tuesday, if I recall. And, you know, my, my big thing is, is to make sure, you mentioned some of those stakeholders. Make sure that we, you know, show stakeholders here that are supporting whatever we're gonna do with this ultimately. That includes also residents who live downtown, because there's a lot of folks, yes, ma'am, who, who live there. And the businesses, the nonprofits, civic institutions, as well as residents, and make sure that they're on board, because we obviously have to do that, and I know, I'm sure you agree with that, ma'am. So, so again, there, you know, we are gonna, I'm sure, reach something that we're gonna be doing. What I want to see is something that is measured, that takes into account the downtown community. I think that's important, and, and we move forward, but in a deliberate but measured way. I think that's, that's important, but, but thank you for your thoughts, ma'am.
Councilmember Clendenon, do you have any new business?
I don't have new business, but I'll, I'll talk about this a little bit. One, I'll, I'll preface it with, generally, in, in, since the, almost two years now that I've been on council, I recognize that I'm in a citywide seat, and I, but I serve with four people that represent single-member districts. And I almost, I, I really, when I, when, when these issues come up that are very much a part of one person's district, I give a lot of deference to that person who represents that district. So, you know, so when you wait those things out, whether it's a, a South Tampa issue or East Tampa downtown, Ebor City issue, or a West Tampa issue, or God knows, we've got some issues up in New Tampa. And, you know, and, and I think, and I think this council has given, you know, the, the Councilman Vera, who represents New Tampa, a lot of deference for that as well. We fight for a lot of those issues, because he comes and fights for those issues, and, you know, so we, we do do that. And I think that's the respectful thing to do. We, we recognize that. So, that being said, to say that I was disappointed in that Tampa Bay Times editorial would be an understatement. I was godsmacked by it. I was like, it was really, it was really interesting. It's not, it's, it's, it's a shame that that was written in the Tampa Bay Times. Once a great newspaper, once, once that should have been heralded, and it's, and, you know, it's not always wise as a politician to take a pot shot at a, at somebody who owns a pen. But I'm, I was very disappointed in that editorial, and I wish there would have been more research and discussions involved before that editorial was written, because this issue on signage is still not flushed out. This is still, this is still just a, this is still just a theory or a discussion. We don't know which direction it's going, and I think that they took some leaps, and I think they took some leaps from people that were spoon-feeding them. This, 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 this issue, again, you know, I, I look at it, and I'm kind of like, you know, it's, it's really not necessarily my issue, but I also try to inject, I take every issue that comes before us as they come, one at a time, you know, and I weigh it, I weigh it all out based on the evidence and based on all the information we've gotten. We've only gotten this much information thus far, so I don't know what this is gonna look like. I don't know how I'll vote on the final product, but you know what? I want to hear all the information. I also, but I also, when I hear things, oh, we're not, we're against digital signs, well, guess what, folks? We got digital signs everywhere. The City of Tampa deploys digital signs. They may just be orange and white, but they're digital signs, telling you that there's an event at an arena, or that a street is closed, or there's a water main break, or we have digital signs on the expressways. We have, there's digital signs all over the City of Tampa, all over the state of Florida. We've got, you know, granted, you know, in our sporting arenas, we have Tampa Bay Ray Rays. My goodness, you, you could be three miles away and see those signs, you know, for, they're, they're on full display for, you know, the beautiful activated displays that are everywhere. We also have gigantic signs, you know, we have big banners. Right here, I'll be honest with you. You talked about the City of Tampa, if we had a motion right now that we could wrap this building in LED, one big LED sign around, it would, it would 100% improve the appearance of the T-Mobile building. This monstrosity of a bomb, bomb shelter that we have with no windows that we have sitting here next to us, and, and every special event...
Think about the income we could make from that.
Think about the income that we could make on that. And, you know, and it's not facing anybody, really, because, you know, we put a giant banner down the front of this building routinely for special events. It could be a digital sign. It's not pointed at anybody. It's, you know, and that would be, and it would enhance the beauty of this thing. Maybe sometimes it could be flowers and birds. You know, I mean, it, there's, there's...
Do we go first?
Exactly. I mean, there's lots of things that you could do, and I think there's a lot of really interesting applications. You talk about the Strass. Look at that, again, big concrete facades. Right now, there's neon lights and stuff on it. Well, what's the difference between that and an LED sign? I mean, it's, we're talking, we start putting some intellectually honesty in this. There's not much difference between LEDs and, you know, and, or the neon, the neon lights that are on the Strass and, and another sign, but I think the devil's always in the details. So as you work on these programs, I think we need to throw out the idea that, oh, digital signs are bad. Now you're, because you're, you're sounding like the, the person that says, I'm never gonna drive a car. Why would I do that when I have a horse and buggy, you know? Times change, things change, technology changes, you know, I'm not gonna use a microwave, because they're gonna, you know, they're radiating me with electricity, you know? We, we, things were, civilization evolves, technology changes, how people digest information changes. And I think that we ju, we just need to explore this and look how it looks and see what, how, where we end up. And when it's all flushed out, we'll all make a vote based on the quality of the product that's presented to us, based on the input that we get from the subject matter experts and the people that live in these districts. And, and we will move on, and someday people will look at this and says, what a silly argument it have had, been had. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hertak?
I don't have any motions. I'll just, you know, say that, yes, I think the, the most difficult question's already been answered, whether to do it or not. That, so now we're just focusing on the design, on, on the, on the particular design aspects. And I, and I think that con, honestly, that's, that's a better place to be than having the argument of whether we're doing it at all. So I really look forward, and thank you for bringing this forward, and I look forward to what the downtown partnership and staff have to say.
Motion received.
Wait, I have an, I have an...
Oh, sorry.
Chairman Maniscalco.
He loves doing that.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to add to the end of staff reports. At the end of the March 27th regular session meeting, a discussion of city council decorum and efficiency.
We have a motion on the floor, but Chairman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
All right.
Motion received.
We have a motion received, and filed by Councilmember Henderson. Do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Vera. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.